Welcome the planning board and we're going to do the swearing in ceremony for Tuesday, May 20th, 2025. Please join the board in a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'd like to swear in our new members. You go up to the podium?
Individually.
Oh, okay. I didn't know she was joining.
Yep. Turn right here.
Yeah.
Yep. You can stand right around the side. I'm right here.
Oh, dude.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Congratulations. I'm going to have you repeat after me. Raise your right hand. I Bill Cohen.
I Bill Cohen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a member of the select board.
As a member of the select board.
For the town of Plymouth.
For the town of Plymouth.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
According to my best abilities and understanding.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Constitution. Agreeably to the rules.
Agreeably to the rules.
And regulations.
And the regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the charter and the bylaws of the town of Plymouth.
And the charter and the bylaws of the town of Plymouth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Just, I want to thank my, my family, my, my sister, my nephew and my mother for coming today. They representing the Cohen family. They're off to another Cohen event. I think that we're running late, so you can depart. But I also wanted to thank everyone that worked on the campaign. I also want to thank the residents. It was an education in itself to get out there and campaign and knock on doors and talk to the people of Plymouth. I often say to people, when you go through a campaign, it has an effect on you. And as I was knocking on doors and talking to residents about their priorities, I stopped and said to myself, here comes the change. So I understand where you go from a volunteer capacity, serving on committees and boards, and then serving in the, in the executive capacity of the town of Plymouth. And I know that doing something like this is going to require the help of all my family and friends and my residents, and the residents of Plymouth. And I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I Deb, Iya Quinto.
I Deb Iya Quinto.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm, and affirm that I will faithfully.
And affirm that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a member of the select board.
As a member of the select board.
For the town of Plymouth.
For the town of Plymouth.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the charter and the bylaws for the town of Plymouth.
And the charter and bylaws for the town of Plymouth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you everybody. Thank you all so much for coming here. I've had a.
Oh, it's, now it's on, okay. So thank you, everyone, for coming here. I have had so many amazing experiences in my life, but being elected to the select board for the town of Plymouth is definitely at the top of the list. I am so grateful for everyone who voted for me, who supported me, who rooted me on and cheered me on and believed in me throughout this entire campaign. I do feel like I had the longest job interview in the history of the world. I felt like I was interviewing every day for four months. And now I know that I have 70,000 new bosses to report to, and I will do the best of my ability to please every one of you. So thank you very much. I'm looking forward to getting to work.
Yep. Mike, go on. Thank you very much. Good evening. Thank you for having us back again. My name is Martin Zurgren. I'm a principal at Sasaki. I'm joined this evening by Alan DeLaSandro and Margit Leander, two planners with Sasaki, to give you a presentation for all that we've been doing towards the Pilgrim 1600 acre area plan. A number of public meetings, online surveys, excellent input from many, many members of the community, as well as from the planning staff. So we want to give you sort of a snapshot of where we are tonight and also present with you also a few discussion points towards the end of this presentation that we'd love to hear some of your thoughts about. For this evening, I'll provide a brief introduction to the overall project and run through the project objectives. Margit will give you highlights from the second public forum that we held, in which we were able to sort of put our puzzle pieces in front of members of the community to think about different land uses for the site. And then we'll also go through what we heard through the broader outreach, our digital outreach in terms of that engagement summary. Some of the discussions for this evening is thinking about what are the fiscal prerogatives of this project and the financing conservation mechanisms that may take place? How do we attract innovation to the sites that many of you see as appropriate for industry, for light industry, and maybe innovative industry? And thirdly, how do we think about broadly in the context of the town of Plymouth to manage growth? And what that means in the context of the entire master plan, which is currently ongoing, but also specifically for this site itself? As a way of introduction, of course, you're all very, very familiar with your own backyard here, sitting between Menomite and Plymouth Town Center. It's about 1600 acres, very well known for the Pilgrim Power Plant along Route 3A and adjacent, of course, to the waterfront. And that was sort of the study area we were given, this mandate to think about what the future holds for this land, which is very well known. It's currently used today, my many of you, recreationally. You know sort of the history of the power plant itself and what that's meant for the town, both economically as well as sort of historically, as a major sort of energy provider to New England. So this study has been funded by the U.S. Economic Development Administration. This is not town money being spent for this study, but rather coming from the federal government. And the town has been, it basically hired us, but also sort of managing us as consultants. We are a planning and urban design group based in Boston, Massachusetts, working across the globe, across the United States, and so happy to be working so much in Massachusetts as well. So it's providing organizational support, not only to town, but also the Plymouth Foundation and the Planning Council itself. So the three firms you see at the bottom, Sasaki, the three of us representing Sasaki, planners and designers, we're also joined by VHB, who are transportation planners and also energy specialists, as well as Landwise, who's really helped us think through the economics, the value of the land and the value of some of the uses that could be coming here in the future. The overall process looks complex, but it actually represents a thorough vetting of many, many different aspects of the project through time. You can see that we started in November with basically understanding the site, beginning to put together a survey, also beginning those original stakeholder interviews, both with the owners of the property, but with many businesses in and around the town of Plymouth, and as well as kicking off that market analysis. As we move towards January, we re-identified what were the key issues for this, the opportunities and constraints for that site itself. We held our first public forum back in February, where we heard from many of you. And we also met with this group as well to begin those initial conversations. From there, we really developed various options, and we'll say those options one, two, and three, but also we sort of led into the exercise which you see over on the table, which many of you got to preview, which was really sort of different land use scenarios for those sites which we thought were most appropriate or that resonated with what we heard back from the survey from all of you. So we put those in front of you. We'll share with you some of the results of those scenarios, both fiscally, but also from a land use perspective. And we'll take those together. As you see, towards the end, we're approaching our June and July, where we'll basically refine those concepts and bring you back a final master plan. Even more complex is sort of a blow-by-blow, week-by-week schedule, same sort of overall flow of information in terms of where we are. We're here at our May meeting date, a number of checkpoints with you all at the town hall, of course, but you can see that that has been tracking sort of our public forums and the overall scheduled events. So for the project objectives, we wanted to quickly sort of put this out there in terms of what the project asked of us as consultants, and then we asked of you as well, is to really think about what this site means from a fiscal resilience point of view. We'll show you a little bit more detail in the slides that come, but certainly you're familiar with the sort of mechanism of balance of what the power plant had been paying to the town and how that has become smaller over the years, of course, and what has actually increased is your residential property taxes. So there's that balance there, which is a fact that you all know very much about. We also wanted to sort of understand situating here. What is the balance of jobs and housing? I'll provide a little bit more detail in a second. How do we think about growth management? Which is to say, where do people live? Where do they go to school? Where do they work? And how do you think of that broadly for the town of Plymouth? And also the very important aspect, which we heard again and again about open space conservation and how important that is to sort of the quality of life in Plymouth itself. So in terms of that fiscal resilience, again, up on the top, you see that orange, which at one point in the past, let's go back all the way to 1972, where we could collect data from here, there was a large amount of revenue being produced that was going to the town of Plymouth. That has become less and less and less over the years. And you'll see that up in 2024 in the upper right-hand corner of that slide. That 1% of Pilgrim is now offset by 2% from the industrial and 86% paid by residential taxes. So quite a different picture from what it was in 1972 to where we are today. And that's really incumbent upon of all of us to think about the future of the land uses on this site. We also, as I mentioned, wanted to capture the dynamic that the majority of folks going for employment are going outside of Plymouth, and the majority of jobs within Plymouth are being filled from folks from outside as well. And so you see this sort of change, both in terms of types of jobs that they're going to outside, many in the Boston area, but also what are the types of jobs that folks are coming in for within Plymouth itself? And that's shown at the graphic on the left-hand side. You see how that's changed a little bit over time, and we're seeing more and more people, that 15% up at the top, and that's even impacted by the pandemic, where people were actually, many chose to move to Plymouth and then still retain their jobs outside. So it's only increased the amount of people who are going out of Plymouth actually for employment. In terms of growth management, it's a really important question. There's a very strong sentiments we heard over and over again about housing in particular, and what that means for the quality of life for all of you here. We wanted to represent with this graphic what the site is presently zoned as, which is to say, land-intensive, low-density development. You see that the words in there in the middle, rural residential is currently the zoning on the site. So if nothing changes, that is what's possible to be developed here. And I think that is what spurred us to have a more engaged, informed conversation, to listen to you, the community, to think about what that would mean and what are the alternatives? And we'll show you many of those this evening. And finally, again, sort of a, we heard over and over again, a beloved aspect of the site is really the sort of the, the great opportunity for conservation. The mountain bike trails are unparalleled on the East Coast. We heard from a very vocal mountain bike community here. And also just sort of the recreational possibilities for walking, for walking your dogs, for biking, for strolling, and just generally, it's part of the quality of Plymouth, is really that open space character, which provides both value, but also a certain sort of look and feel to the overall town. We did want to point out one important aspect in the red on the top, which is this sort of borderline on Rocky Hill Road, north of Rocky Hill Road, where Holtech, the town does not have the right of first refusal on that site. So that site remains largely in the, let's say, responsibility of Holtech going forward. Whereas on the other side, that right of first refusal, if they're looking to dispose of the land, to sell the land, the city has the right to match that price point and say, yes, we are interested in purchasing that land and then figuring out what to do with that more broadly.
Thanks, Martin. So we wanted to just touch on, recap sort of our second public forum that we had back in April. And maybe before doing that, really just recap sort of the engagement process in general that we've had since January, that Martin was talking about. Back in January, and we really started with a big online presence in terms of digital survey, got a really high rate of response there, over 3,800 responses to that survey, very impressive. Also a lot of activity on the project website, as well as comments coming in through there. The first public forum we had in February, for those of you that could attend, that one was a much more sort of structured visioning session, really trying to get a sense of people's goals for the site, what they would like to see, really thinking big. That was structured around sort of smaller group discussions, people at tables. And we had about 175 participants show up to that one, so really great attendance there. Our most recent public forum, the second one that we're going to get into today, was back in April. We had another really good showing, almost 130 participants there. That one was a much more sort of open house style, sort of drop in, drop out, come as you go, really taking some of our analysis, tried to give feedback, try to get a sense of the community's preferences around both uses as well as character. And then the, the exercise that we have up here on the board here, the puzzle exercise around land use combinations for the site, which we'll get into in a little bit. So the second public forum, the open house, we had four different stations that I'll talk through right now. The first one was really guidance, really bringing people up to speed on the process and really sort of our baseline assumptions for this exercise. The second station was focused on master plan concepts, the three concepts you see over there on. over there on the boards. This was just sort of some example scenarios, concepts, sort of combinations of land use potentially that could be on the site, as well as sort of their fiscal impact that you see on the left-hand side of the board, so getting people's feedback on reactions to those potential scenarios. The third one, use and character, really trying to get a sense of preference, of what people were looking for, what they liked, what would feel good on the site. And the final station was really to mix and match this puzzle exercise that we had previewed here with all of you. So the first station, really on guidance, this was really making sure that everyone understood our sort of baseline assumptions around constraints for development on site. The top two, you can really see, are our takeaways around physical constraints, really trying to avoid steep slopes, you see in the top-left corner, and then really conserving the existing wetlands that are on the site today. The bottom two were really constraints that were informed by all of our community input that we've been receiving. The first one was conserving the hilltop, really making sure that those views were preserved and publicly accessible, are not open to private development. And the fourth one was really protecting recreational uses, sort of what Martin was getting at, you know, we acknowledge all of the intense recreational use that's there today, really trying to preserve areas with high density of trails. Also presenting back to people, site sort of overall suitability, sort of our conclusions, which were really the areas in light yellow that you see, about 20% of the overall 1,600 acres, we deemed suitable for development, and then everything else, essentially 80% of the site as challenging or less suitable for development. So really trying to make sure that everyone was at the same starting point in terms of our assumptions for this exercise. Second station was really focused on the three master plan concepts we have up there, really getting people's feedback on the different types of uses, whether it was residential, whether it was industrial, whether it was other recreation or ecotourism uses. So trying to do a mix of all three, get a sense of people's preferences and what they were looking for. So here's just an example of one of the concepts. You can see, this is what people saw at the open house, they were able to sort of bring up their puzzle pieces, if you're able to see what we have here, put them on our board, and up on the dashboard, be able to see the land use breakdown corresponding to that concept. You see on the top-left there, then you would see the anticipated annual town fiscal impact. You'd be able to see if it's a net positive fiscal impact or a net negative fiscal impact. And then at the bottom, we were able, we were trying to really help the public understand sort of what it means in terms of finance and conservation, and try to get a sense of which different uses could have potential impacts or could have potential to have revenue generated from development on the site that could potentially help conserve land. So that whole bar there, really thinking about what it would take to acquire or conserve land on the site, and potentially what portion of that could be financed by some development on site, just getting people to wrap their heads around that. Third station is really focused on character and use. Here we were showing people examples of different housing typologies, different types of industrial uses, a different type of commercial uses, trying to get a sense really of what people could imagine on this site, what they would want to see on this site, and what would really complement Plymouth as it is today. And then finally, the mix and match exercise, the puzzle exercise I was talking about, people were able to make their own pieces, bring it up to the front of the room, the cafeteria, and be able to see their scenario and the anticipated town fiscal impacts all there. So this was really the top sort of combination that we saw, we were documenting what everyone was bringing up, that we saw, so really a mix of housing. You can see housing over on the Warren Cove site, on the waterfront, really sort of a mix of both energy and light industrial, seeing a little bit more light industrial on the eastern edge, and then maybe thinking about less residential or development in general in the middle, focusing a little bit more on sort of a smaller hotel area, but more of a visitor center, but less development intensive there. But the top combination was resulting in a net positive fiscal impact, you can see, but a minimal potential amount of revenue coming from development on site, some, but not a great amount. So while that was the top sort of combination we were seeing from people, there were a lot of common comments we heard back or just concerns that were expressed, specifically around the Warren Cove area, a lot of talk about the impacts of having residential and traffic impacts specifically on the adjacent residential neighborhood on Rocky Hill Road came up quite a bit. General, I think, a little bit of skepticism around the demand or market capacity for a hotel, despite many people proposing or choosing that piece, as well as some hesitant around having light industrial on the eastern edge there, adjacent to some of the residential communities to the east. And this, I think, is sort of a summary of what we heard from all of you tonight, and Alan, maybe I'll let you speak to this as you were getting all the feedback.
Sure, I just put this in screenshot quickly after we talked with all of you over there at the box, and this was kind of the most common solution that we saw coming from you. Pretty much everyone selected a light industry use on Powerhouse Road, and also thought maybe there could be an intensification of industrial uses on the waterfront. Housing wasn't very popular among this group, there were a couple of people who proposed it, and I think it was an interesting idea that a couple of people came up with, that maybe the light industry could be mixed in with some workforce housing or some kind of creative mixed use like that.
So just have a sort of overall recap, a summary of our entire engagement process here, and really try to capture that in sort of seven key themes, takeaways that we'll talk through right now. I think Martin said this right at the start of this presentation, we really heard loud and clear, of course, conservation is a priority. You know, the community really values this, of course, for the scenic views, just, I think, just all the recreational uses that exist today and the additional capacity for more. Also thinking about environmental health, too, I think, thinking about the significance of this land, the potential to have contiguous land area to other, you know, just thinking about the broader open space network as a whole, really top of mind, I think, also coming back to growth management and thinking, you know, is this the right site for more growth in Plymouth? So another topic that came up quite a bit related to conservation. However, we did hear quite clearly that, you know, development is acceptable if it supports conservation. So here, the chart on the right, you're really seeing, this was one of our first survey questions that many people did agree or strongly agree with the statement that they would support some economic development on the site if it meant it was going towards more conservation or some form of conservation on the site. So I think general sort of consensus around the idea that some development would be acceptable if it was a means to the end of conservation. Third, I think, you know, general consensus, development should be fiscally positive. You know, we definitely got the sense that fiscal health is very top of mind for folks, so really making sure that whatever, if any development does come, it would be really covering its own infrastructure costs and would be able to produce tax revenue, and that would ultimately lead to additional conservation set aside, so keeping that top of mind as well. As Martin mentioned, you know, we recognize all of the growth that Plymouth has really experienced in the last 15 years, especially in this region, so I think general sentiment was that housing and population growth should be managed at the town scale, and really hearing from people sort of the concerns around overdevelopment and the stresses that would have on public infrastructure. The fifth sort of key theme, really having, if any, housing development that is keeping in line with the town character. We really saw a lot of sort of preference for more medium densities, if anything cottage clusters. This is something that Alan, actually in our discussion, will get into a little bit in greater detail, but that was, that was sort of where most people were flocking to, not necessarily rural residential, lower-density lots, nor town homes or higher-density homes. In terms of industrial uses, I think people really were attracted to sort of the notion that industrial development should be innovative and impactful, thinking about sort of innovation, sort of parks versus the typical business industrial park, thinking about those that are really related to themes of sustainability, of energy, of science and research, and some of the examples you'll see we'll get into in the discussion portion. And lastly, sort of key theme about, you know, the waterfront is the sort of well-suited for an intensification of use, the general consensus around that, and, you know, maybe most people were citing that because of the existing development that's there today, really thinking that that was sort of the most suitable for more intense economic development, but also being able to leverage the existing infrastructure that's there with the high-voltage line that we know. So I think, yeah, general consensus here, too, that while people were excited about sort of potential recreational waterfront and marina uses, throughout the process, really people are recognizing that the spent fuel on the site really would create sort of security concerns, and that was not going to be a likely possibility, at least in the near term. So I'll pass it to Alan.
Thank you. So I'll walk us through a few different discussions, and there's three total that we're going to go through, and at the end of each of these, I'll just kind of pause and ask for the input of the boards. Skip ahead a lot. Okay, so we'll talk about financing conservation, attracting innovation, and then managing growth. So first, in financing conservation, so an important thing that we heard was, of course, conservation is a priority, and we want to make sure that we have a fiscally responsible way to set aside as much of this land for conservation as possible, knowing that this doesn't belong to the city. Conservation requires some degree, sorry, the town, requires some degree of acquisition of the land, and we have estimated the cost of conserving this land anywhere between $50 million and $90 million. So we're looking at a variety of strategies that could potentially create a multifaceted approach to conservation finance and distribute the burden of that $50 to $90 million between different partners. So as a way of kind of demonstrating what that might mean, we came back to this very popular concept from public forum two, where you have a mix of different land uses, industry on the east, a little bit of housing on the west, and then some intensification of use on the waterfront. And one way to think about this is, as you start to open up some of the land for development, you could ask the developers to set aside conservation land in exchange for the development rights. This is a model that's already frequently used in Plymouth and is in nearby laws. So this area up there, I don't know if you can see in red, we're kind of saying, this is potentially something that you could ask that housing developer to set aside in conservation. You could also require that both any future energy uses on the waterfront, any industrial uses on Powerhouse Road, have some sort of conservation buffer around them. Then you could also piece together some contributions from state and federal grants, things directly acquired by the town for recreational purposes, or a new well site, which we know is of interest, potential need, and then also something that's acquired by a nonprofit partner. So really, the goal of thinking through this thought exercise is to say that $50 to $90 million does not need to be put all on the town, and there's a way of kind of distributing the burden across different agencies and groups. And another kind of opportunity here is to think about some revenue generating activity. In the concept we were looking at before, we had a kind of visitor center, we were calling the hike and bike visitor center, and that had some like lodges associated with it. So the idea there is that if you have a nonprofit partner or something that's operating something that's generating revenue, that can offset the maintenance costs. So not only can we try to find ways to creatively avoid putting all the acquisition costs on the town, also try to find a way to avoid creating new maintenance costs for the town. I don't know why it's going so fast. Okay. And then, looking at, you know, a precedent for this kind of thing, so in Massachusetts, it's quite common to work with land trusts who will kind of cobble together these partnerships between different agencies and landowners to create these larger conservation areas. So an example is the Fort Town Greenway in Worcester, where you have multiple landowners, private owners, municipalities, and nonprofit partners who've all come together in a unified governance strategy. So we could think about a similar thing happening here, and just noting a couple grant programs that are available to actually kind of give the seed money to start programs like this, the Massachusetts Conservation Partnership Grant Program and the Local Acquisitions for Natural Diversity or Land Grant Program. So our first discussion is to kind of ask you, given that this is a large financial burden but a clear priority for the town's residents, how can we ensure that the majority of the Pilgrim 1600 is conserved in a financially responsible way?
I'm going to ignore the question and ask you a question.
Okay.
Sorry about that. So the $50 to $90 million?
Yes.
Does that include the waterfront site where the actual plant is?
No.
So it's just the area where we have the right of first refusal?
Yeah, that's 85%, I think, 1,400 acres that we've assumed would be conserved.
Is that in today's dollars?
Yes.
So in eight years, what do you think it'll cost?
Wouldn't care to even venture.
More, though, right?
Right, it's clearly a large margin of error with our back of the napkin estimate if we're going from $50 to $90 million, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Planning board?
One thing that I, it's not missing, but it's in the evolution of this plan, if it ever comes to fruition, there have been a lot of thought about the potential revenue from generating, you talk about the lodges or whatever, but for creating a trail system that is developed and maintained for bicyclists, for hikers, and linking to the rest of the town, and the potential revenue from that, like, for example, I was looking at today, not that we'll be, I've always referenced this property as a mini Acadia, and if I look today at the value of Acadia to Bar Harbor, and it's a half billion dollars a year, so Bar Harbor is a city and, you know, has many restaurants and other recreational things, but the contribution of people that just come to Acadia is a half billion dollars. So I'm not sure, but it needs to be mentioned that this is a potential, maybe it's an after-the-fact potential, if you do these things, if you acquire this land, but I do take some assurance, and I think the community should, that if this is developed properly, that it could be a definite revenue generator for the town while preserving the property as well.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much.
So we'll move to our second discussion, which is attracting innovation. So as we saw in our community engagement results, the community is more likely to support a kind of industrial or economic development use on this site if it's something innovative, impactful, has kind of a minimal environmental impact, and they tended to gravitate towards things like high-tech, science and research, sustainable industries. But we have to recognize that this is a challenging site to attract industries, it's not your typical beside-the-highway kind of industrial park location, this is a little bit further away from major highways within the overall region, it's probably not the first site that people would choose. So we want to think about what would really differentiate this site from anywhere else that an industrial broker could go and purchase, and there's kind of five areas that we look at with this site that we think are potential differentiators that could set it apart from other properties in southeast Massachusetts. So the first is, if you're able to work with a anchor institution, that's one way that these kinds of innovation districts usually form. So example is the Northeastern University Innovation Zone in Burlington, Massachusetts, or the Woods Hole Oceanographic Institute, which of course is a government agency that then attracts this whole cluster of talent around it. So understanding that, you know, if you're able to forge that partnership early on, this is a potential way to start building that economic activity. All right, there we go. Another potential differentiator and recognizing that this site has something that no other site in Massachusetts has, is the nuclear power plant or the history of the nuclear power station. So understanding that there is a past of people who are talented and have this very specialized skill in your community, and maybe there is a future as well for fostering that cluster of energy talent, and it doesn't have to be limited to nuclear technologies. There's a couple of examples here, Commonwealth Fusion is something up in Devens, the Oak Ridge National Laboratory, of course, that's much bigger than anything that would happen on the Pilgrim 1600, but once you get people together, you know, the fact that Holtek is here and could be a partner that also supports maybe other research activities, maybe other manufacturing activities or workforce training related to the energy industry. activities, or workforce training related to the energy industry. We think the waterfront access is also something that's a potential differentiator. Not a lot of industrial sites available right now with waterfront access. If you could work with Holtek to permit some sort of waterfront access for industries, that might attract certain blue economy uses like aquaculture, boat fabrication, and repair. Energy reliability is something that we heard last time as well, is something that might attract certain types of tenants to this site. There are a lot of industries that have a lot to lose if they lose their energy supply. So being so close to an energy generator, which, if there is ever another energy generation here, that's possible, but also just so close to the switchyard and to this high-voltage infrastructure, provides a little bit more reliability for things like cold storage and data centers, which could co-locate next to this energy infrastructure. And lastly, a strategy that a lot of places in Massachusetts use to attract these kinds of innovative industries is development incentives. So offering things like tax abatements, low-cost upfront capital to get a enterprise started, or putting up costs for infrastructural improvements through all of these different state and federal programs, which you're seeing just some of them on the screen right So our discussion question is, if economic development is desired on the Pilgrim 1600, how or what do you think would attract these kinds of innovative industries that the community is really interested in to this site? Any thoughts? You can also ask me questions.
I'm sure many people noticed that the governor has instituted proposal to step back from the 1982 law banning nuclear power in Massachusetts. Obviously, given our location, given the infrastructure that's there, given the history of the site, this could certainly be a prime site for something like the small modular reactors, if that was something that the community was in favor of supporting. So I think the incentive is the history of the site and the technology and the workers that are around. More so than anything else, it's something that no one else can compete with. Plymouth will always have a challenge, given its location, to compete with those with better highway access, more commercial visibility, but nobody is going to be able to compete with an existing high-voltage switchyard and miles and miles of transmission lines that it would probably cost somewhere in the neighborhood of a billion dollars to replicate somewhere else, if it could even be done. So I think that was something that I heard, at least at a lot of the forum discussions, that people were certainly amenable to that, given that that's the probably highest and best ability to do something that would substantively change the tax base here in Plymouth, while at the same time also preserving the vast majority of the site, and obviously creating an incentive for the owner of that site to be generous with the town of Plymouth in terms of what it did for that land, so that we're not looking at a 50 to 90 million dollar bill, or significantly higher, as Mr. Golden said, when we start looking at this from a five-to-10-year period in the future. So that was just a comment that I had, based upon what I heard from the residents at the various forums that we've attended. Thank you.
Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would agree with Mr. Bullington's sentiments here. If there were to be any kind of exploration of that sort of small modular reactor on that site, though, the community needs to be deeply involved. And I think there needs to be diligence from the select board to create something like a host community rate for the folks who are struggling with their energy bills here in this community. So I don't know if you folks have research on that sort of an arrangement where these things have happened elsewhere, but I'd be delighted to see it if you do.
We can look into that, yeah.
Mr. Canty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, in terms of the energy component, before we bring new nuclear reactors to Plymouth, it would be nice if we could get rid of the nuclear waste from the last one, and not be the permanent depository of that. There was a proposed solution a number of years ago, that due to bigger political influencers than exist at 26 Cord Street, went away. So I would want the state, if the state is interested in that type of thing, they should be going to bat for us to get that stuff out of this community, so that we're not warehousing that in perpetuity. Because as it stands right now, when Plymouth is celebrating its 1,600-year anniversary, we're still going to have that nuclear waste on site. So that's one thing. And then in terms of anchor institutions, I do think, I've always liked the idea of something like a Woods Hole North, or, you know, I'm a Northeastern grad myself, although I never have been to the Burlington Satellite Campus, but I think those type of anchor institutions, I mean, Massachusetts is lousy with great higher institutions of learning that we could try and partner with, and bring good jobs that are doing good work in this community, whether it is the type of earth sciences that I mentioned at our last forum related to a Woods Hole North type thing, or something else where people are, you know, they're good, high-paying jobs that are relatively low traffic to the surrounding area that they're in, because that is a concern for the residents of Chiltonville and the surrounding areas as well. But also, it's something that would be, you know, beneficial on the whole, for more people, and those types of jobs could live in Plymouth, and not have to be commuting from elsewhere. There'd be the knock-on effects of, you know, people travel to Woods Hole, take tours of it, so it is in and of itself a tourism destination as well. So it's an asset in many fronts and in many avenues. So if we could focus on something like that, if there is also any type of power development, whether that means connecting to offshore winds using the switchyard, or solar, or something else, just battery storage, something like that, the possibility of like a data center as well in that area, because that's low-traffic, high-value, the town could tax it at a high rate with relatively low impact, as long as we don't, not to repeat the monologues of a former colleague, but as long as we don't repeat the issues of the past, at least we can use that money better, more strategically, to position this community for a more fiscally solvent future than we've dealt with since 1972 to present. So I would like to see us utilize this opportunity in those types of directions. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Mann?
I think, in a large part, the residents have spoken that what they see as a vision for this area is green, is open space, is connecting to other open space that we have. So in terms of innovation, I really think that it would be very appealing if, for example, on Powerhouse Road, there was light commercial startup businesses that focused on green energy and alternative energies, and they were directly connected to this vision of this green space, of these connected trails. I think it'd be very appealing to a company like that, who already has chosen that field and that industry, and the employees, this is oftentimes an avocation to them as much as a vocation, so that if we could have a less passive, I mean, a more passive type of industry there, I am a little hesitant to endorse the notion of nuclear power plants, however new and innovative they are in that zone, because I think we don't know what's available, what's possible, and all the problems that would be associated with them. We do know, without a doubt, that they would be controversial, there'd be a lot of opposition, and it would be a rougher road, I think, to bring those kinds of things in, after we have, as Mr. Canty said, just started extricating ourselves from that and still are left over with, you know, thousands of years of waste. Thank you.
And if I would naturally look into it more, but I said it at town meeting, and I've said it in different places, that the SMR 300s are used all over Europe. They're building them in the United States. It's a different, it's a small plant, it's modular, I'm not going to have to explain it to you folks, but I think it warrants looking at, and I do agree with everybody as far as the green goes. I mean, if it was solely my idea and my way, it'd be the modular plants with the right information and the blessing of the town, and not to drop the tax rate down, but to also have a generation's station portion of that for our residents. Because they're the ones that are struggling with the $700 electric bills, $1,100 gas bills, and this is why I was thinking that way, and they're very interested in doing that. And as far as a data center goes, you're not going to put a data center there, because there's not enough electricity. We have data centers now that are iron Plymouth, okay? You want to know? They do. The problem is, there's not enough energy to power the plants, the data centers themselves. So there you go. So we have to do something with that. You have the carrier lines, transmission lines there, those have already been bought by Eversource. I don't think Eversource invested in those highly, just, you know, look at them the way they are now. So I'm sure there's plans there, but it needs to be looked at, I think, as a community. And if it doesn't work, and the people don't want it, you all don't want it, it don't happen. But I think even the governor's realizing that we have to do something else besides solar. We're not going to solar ourselves and green ourselves out of the energy needs, we just can't do it. And I think a lot of people agree with that, and there's probably a lot that don't, but you don't have the same kind of waste that we had with the one that we had, the Pilgrim plant. These are different, and, you know, this is a very premature, but it'd be my ideal goal to see one or two modular plants there, on the same footprint, have you, because you can't put anything else in that footprint, and leave the rest of it open space. No building at all, no centers, no nothing, because anything you put there is going to generate traffic. We just come off a campaign, we welcomed two new things, and I'm going to bet, without asking them, I bet you heard traffic. And then the second thing you probably heard, if not, if I don't have them reversed, you heard about condos. Okay. So, you know, I'm just being honest here. Whatever you put there is going to generate traffic, and we have to think about that, because we always do a traffic study. I've said it before. Five years from now, that traffic study doesn't work. And then guess, welcome to the club, who's at fault, everybody at this table, even though you had nothing to do with it. So, no, no, I'm just saying, welcome, you're sworn in now. So, I mean, I hope not, you know, but that's usually how it goes. And to the gentleman to my right, you know what I'm saying? Just sit here a little while. So, that's it.
Mr. Cohen?
So, Sikaki, you've given us a review of analysis that you've put together from your professional opinion in listening to the residents. It's something that we're going to look at over a period of time. Obviously, we're in the midst of a decommissioning, and time is going to pass, and technology's going to change, and we're going to be challenged with decisions. I do, I did participate in those discussions, and like the chairman just indicated, hot off a campaign schedule, you hear the residents talk about growth and development. So I think that preservation needs to maybe be a major component to this scenario. But any economic development that we speak of, we should always be running economic models that it would affect the town's budget in terms of cost of services. There's one part of your report that I was very interested in, how you're running models there at the end. That is something that we need to rely on more heavily when we alter our zoning, that we know the financial effects that will have on the town. The other thing is that if we're realistically going to acquire the land and preserve it, we're going to have to partner with numerous federal and state agencies and grant opportunities and nonprofits, and that's going to take, we have the time to start gathering that information and running different scenarios, that if this opportunity does come before the town, the town will be prepared to engage the proper grants and the proper grant cycles, and also engage the appropriate state agencies and federal agencies and nonprofits. So I think we have to do outreach to the community further than Plymouth on those subject matters, so that we're prepared for this eventual opportunity that the town will have. Just like we're preparing for possible economic development, we need to be preparing for possible conservation. Thank you very much.
Ken?
So I think this whole process just has given us such an incredible wealth of information, and it tells a variety of stories about the potential for this site, which is very exciting. And it also combines data and market trends and community engagement in such a unique and collaborative ways. And I hope that this is a model that we can mimic going forward for other kinds of big projects like that. One thing that really intrigued me about this innovation discussion and about the discussion of energy, clearly we need to be exploring alternative energy sources. That's a given. And I do like the idea of thinking about SMRs or other kinds of nuclear energy. However, I would not want to see Plymouth be a beta site for any of these technologies at all. So they'd need to be proven, and I know the technology is moving in that direction. So I definitely want to make sure that we were very cautious along there and didn't just jump into something because we thought it would be a good revenue-generating thing to do. The other thing that really intrigued me was your discussion about the energy talent cluster. That was one thing that I hadn't really thought about before, and it would be really interesting to explore, that we have a ready-made workforce that has a lot of experience in the energy industry. And I'm just curious if that would be transferable to other types of energy, like the green energies that Frank was discussing earlier. And I think that would just be an interesting thing for us to take a look at, because that could be a huge attraction factor for different kinds of energy companies coming to Plymouth. But great work, this was really a great process.
Thank you. We have one more discussion, so I'll move on to this one. Come on. I have a mouse, too. See if that works. There you go. Okay. So the next, the last discussion is called managing growth, which I think is also kind of a synthesis of what we've talked about so far. So we're looking at really these two areas of the site in yellow that are suitable from our assessment for any kind of housing development. But that's not to say that this is the best possible place in Plymouth for your next, you know, housing development over the next 10 to 15 years, to accommodate whatever natural rate of growth you might want to accommodate. So the conversation is really asking, is the Pilgrim 1600 the best place in Plymouth for new housing at this moment in time? So zooming out a little bit and looking at your, you know, this area, and this is not the whole town, the town's so big it's hard to fit on the slide, but just the area around the Pilgrim 1600. Your previous master plans had really great insight into seeing Plymouth as not just its town, but a series of discreet villages, each of which have their own center and a residential area around that center. So you have Manamet, you have Plymouth Town Center, you have North Plymouth, and we even say that Pine Hills is kind of emerging as this new village within this network. But you also have a large pattern of development that kind of goes against that, and has really spread out into the surrounding open space and forests, and is a lot less dense and a lot more land-intensive. And I think we've heard early on from town personnel and you all, that there is an impact on the town's fiscal situation from this. It's a lot to bus students from this very large area. It's a lot to deliver the services and infrastructure that all of these houses need to such a large town. So as you move forward and think about the future, there's a potential to start looking at your open spaces as this system that helps to reinforce the identity of all of these villages as distinct areas, and kind of contain growth to areas where you have already dedicated the inputs of infrastructure, of services, where there's already the sewage, the water, everything that's necessary to support that growth. So this will require thinking a little bit differently, making sure that you're really directing developers to infill existing sites within these town centers, rather than take land from the periphery of the villages. So this is kind of exactly what you all presented to us when we talked to you. This was your preferred solution, but also basically looks at it, what would it mean to not have housing here, which I think is something that a lot of you thought was the right direction. I can't read the number, but I think it's probably in the 600,000 annual tax revenue from this light industry. But one of the challenges is that we've seen housing as a potential way to set aside conservation land. So as happened at Pine Hills or Red Brook or other recent developments, you have in your bylaws mechanisms to ask developers to set aside conservation land on their dollar for public uses or for the public benefit in exchange for the right to develop housing. If that doesn't happen within Pilgrim 1600, one mechanism that you can explore is the transfer of development rights, or TDR, where if you are giving extra development rights to developers to do infill in the village centers, you could ask them to contribute to basically a fund, but what they're actually doing is buying development rights from the Pilgrim 1600, transferring them to another location, and saying, we're going to set aside this land in exchange for being able to develop an extra floor on this site. So the conversation here is kind of saying, is Pilgrim 1600 the right place for Plymouth's future housing growth? If not, kind of thinking more broadly about, okay, how are we going to leverage other mechanisms to make sure that development funding or private funding can be used to contribute to the conservation goals that we've laid out here? And there's really two ways that would happen. One is to transfer development rights from some other location to this site. The other is something that's already come up in this discussion. How much can we focus on industrial and future energy pilots to generate that additional revenue and direct some of that revenue towards conservation? So this is our last discussion, and I'll open it up, but also say, if you want me to go back to any other slides, just let me know.
No.
Okay.
Seriously, no. I don't think, I mean, there's one road in and one road out. We don't have the infrastructure to support more housing there. If there is housing, it should be a part of a mixed use type development where there's minimal housing in that area. I think you folks have heard it through all of your public engagements. We've all heard it through our constituent services. Most of that land needs to stay in some kind of conservation, open space type existence. The rest of it needs to have a heavy commercial and industrial focus. And when I say heavy, I don't mean heavy commercial. I mean, light industrial type things.
Mr. Canty?
I agree with Mr. Golden. I love my constituents, but I already have enough of them. We don't need more housing on this site, and I think that the community doesn't want more housing on this site. I think it's going to be a big reach for this community to get as much of this land as we want. We're doing everything that we can. We have over the last few years, this new board, I'm sure will continue to do what the prior boards had done in trying to put money towards this and position ourselves to be in a position to have as much cash on hand to buy it, and also try and partner with different groups as needed to purchase this land and have Plymouth have a seat at that table. I do think that some light industry in the sense of that innovation type center we were talking about earlier, and those good earth sciences type jobs or highly educated type jobs that we could have, because those bring higher revenue to the people that work there, and then they can live and work in the community, which will increase all of our metrics within this area. I do think that making some use of the energy component based on the switchyard, although I am, as I alluded to earlier, skeptical about SMRs at this point, but we'll see what happens with that. But I would like to see as much of this preserved as possible. I do think you could have some economic development that supports the tourism components, like mountain biking and hiking, things like that, and maybe an observation tower, given the majestic views there. That would be nice. But other than that, I'd like to see as much of this land disturbed in as little a way as possible, and as little or ideally no housing on the parcel. We have plenty of that already. Thank you.
I'm a no also on the housing. We have enough houses, sorry. But I would like to see, let's look at the SMR 300s, and I kind of floated around a little bit, you know, when we were all at the table, and if you play, you know, do the deal right, if you will, that's probably a bad term right now, but if you negotiate properly and come to a decision, they'd probably give you a good portion of that land. I got a couple nods from them already. So, you know, let's keep talking, keep negotiating, and I bet you won't have to buy it all, is what I'm getting at. And I've got a couple head nods on that already. So, let's take a look at that road, too. I'll whoever see it do that, and I think that'll play a big part in what we're trying to do. Because at the end of the day, I don't want it developed either. Anyone else plan a board? No? Oh, Mr. Cohen?
Just one note. I agree with that housing is an issue at this location that we probably are not prepared to aggressively in any way go after. But you do bring up a very interesting point with the transfer of development rights. I think that we have a transfer of development right by law in town today, and we need to focus on the sending and receiving areas and creating overlay districts to incentivize protecting open space, especially environmentally sensitive areas, and trying to control the cost of services. You do introduce a subject matter that should become part of the topic. And I guess what we should be looking at is looking at zoning issues around the town of Plymouth that would foster a housing that would be controlling the cost of services and meet a crisis. There is a crisis in its housing, and people can't afford it. This is, you know, we don't want to seem like we're not friendly towards that responsibility in the Commonwealth. So obviously, in the 1600 acres, we're not looking to do anything like that. But you do bring up some interesting points that will give the community food for thought. So, thank you.
Any other comments?
So, one of our priorities, or one of our goals, I should say, is to direct development to the areas that already have the infrastructure to support it. So housing clearly would not help us meet that goal if we put housing in that area. I don't think we're in a position to be adding infrastructure to an area that we would prefer to see conserve. So to me, it doesn't make any sense at all to put housing in that area. Perhaps down along Powerhouse Road, if there was some sort of interesting mixed-use opportunity that would complement the community, I could see it in there, but definitely not in the main area that we would like to see preserved with the light industry and the areas that you had indicated earlier in the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Ayah Quinta. I couldn't get your name out there for a minute, but I apologize. I'm getting it. Okay. Any other comments from the boards? See you none. Anything else, gentlemen?
Just to say, our next steps are that we will come back and meet with you in early July is the plan. So over the next few weeks, we're going to be synthesizing everything we've heard from you, from the community, trying to kind of say, if this is what's going to happen next, here are some of the strategies that the town should pursue. And I think you've all said it well, it's about building the capacity to forge these partnerships that then enable you to seize an opportunity to acquire the land when that pops up. So kind of paving that roadmap for you, so you understand where things could head in the future, but acknowledging that it is a long way, a long road ahead, and we don't have all the answers. So a lot will still be in the hypothetical. If this happens, here's the way you might respond.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Let me take a five-minute recess.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight's meeting of the Plymouth Select Board is going to take place in a hybrid format. Members of the Board are joining us here in person at the Great Hall at Town Hall. Members of the public may be joining us, or presenters may be joining us virtually over the Zoom webinar platform. Login information for the Zoom webinar platform is included on the agenda that is posted on the Town website. You may also view the meeting on television on Comcast Channel 9 or Verizon Channel 47. Members of the public are also reminded pursuant to Massachusetts General Law that any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of the Select Board after notifying the Chair subject to reasonable requirements of the Chair so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Beginning of the meeting, the Chair shall inform other attendees of any recordings. At present, we are aware of only the recording being made by the local scene for the Zoom and the television broadcast. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. First order of business is our Select Board reorganization. How many nominations?
I nominate Kevin Canty.
I'll second the nomination.
First and second by Mr. Golden. Mr. Cohen?
I second that.
You know, second in the voting?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
I vote yes.
And Deb?
Yes.
And myself, no. Nominations for our Vice Chairman.
I nominate David Golden.
I second.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
And myself, yes, unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Quintle. That brings us to the next section of the agenda. That would be the hearing for EZM Taqueria doing business as Cancun Express Tacos. We'll read the notice. In accordance with Chapter 138 of the Massachusetts General Laws, as amended, notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held at the Plymouth Town Hall, 26 Court Street, Plymouth, Massachusetts, on Tuesday, May 20, 2025, at 6:01 p.m. or thereafter to consider the application for a new annual all alcohol restaurant license from EZM Taqueria Incorporated doing business as Cancun Express Tacos and Burritos, 765 State Road, Gloria Zalima, Sandoval Manager. Description of premises will be as follows. 1,054 square feet of space on one floor with two entrances and two exits. Anyone wishing to be heard on this matter should plan to attend this meeting. I will declare at this time at 6:45 p.m. the hearing to be open. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of the applicant? You may take the podium. If you could introduce yourself, and you may say a few words, and then we may have questions for you about your application.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for having us. My name is Erin Alley. I'm an attorney here representing EZM Taqueria, Inc. It's going to be a small restaurant on State Road in Manette. There's an application before you for a full liquor license, and if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to help.
Does anyone have, any members of the Board have any questions for the applicants representative? Do you, if no one else does, when do you anticipate that the restaurant would be open?
Hoping as soon as our liquor license is available from the Town. I know that it does have to go to, hopefully after approval, it would go straight to the state's review, so likely upon receipt from them, then we'd look to open soon thereafter.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of the application? All right, issue into the license. If you'd like to take the podium and introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Ezekiel Sandoval. We currently own Cancun Mexican Restaurant in Kingston. We've been there for more than 18 years, and we've been feeding families, you know, of the area over here, and our goal is to bring good quality food in a little faster pace, and at the same time, we'll be able to provide, you know, like a full experience or maybe couples or families coming over and, you know, having a drink at the site, as well as we'll be having like family taco kits that work out for us very well during the pandemic, and we still have a lot of family taco kits that are, you know, very attractive for families pretty much.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the Speaker from the Board? Hearing and seeing none. Well, thank you for bringing your business to Plymouth. I've been to your Kingston location, so thank you very much. Look forward to seeing your new operation. Anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Hearing and seeing, is there someone online?
Um, it's a man down.
Oh, okay.
You better close the hearing.
Close the hearing afterwards.
Before we vote.
Right, we're not voting yet. Thank you, though.
You're welcome.
All right. So, anyone here to speak in opposition? Anyone online, Jade? Okay. At this time, I will close the hearing. Wish of the Board in regards to the application. Mr. Golden?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the new all alcohol restaurant license for EZM Taqueria, Inc. doing business as Cancun Express Tacos and Burritos at 765 State Road.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Golden. It has been moved. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Ms. Iaquinto has seconded. Any discussion about whether or not we should approve the application? Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm excited to have you folks be part of the Man Met community. I talk about this all the time, I'm the only one who lives south of the M Road. I think that's true, right? And welcome to Plymouth.
Thank you very much.
Assuming we vote in favor.
Anyone else in discussion?
I just want to add, welcoming you to Plymouth. You've been, I work at Kingston Elementary School, and you have been very good to our teachers there, so I appreciate that, and welcome you to Plymouth.
All right. Anyone else from the Board wish to participate in discussion? All right, hearing and seeing none. Call for the vote. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Quintle?
Yes.
And Ms. Iaquinto?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
That brings us into the licenses section. We have a number of licenses, outdoor amplified music, common victular, comprehensive entertainment, Sunday entertainment licenses in conjunction with a liquor license that we just approved, and then fuel storage, change of ownership. Wish of the Board to the listed licenses and other items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Unless the Board has any items that they want to remove, I would make a motion that we approve the one day eight wine and malt licenses, the outdoor amplified music licenses, the common victular licenses, the comprehensive entertainment licenses, the Sunday entertainment licenses, the licenses in conjunction with the liquor license, and the fuel storage licenses as presented on the agenda.
All right, it has been moved as a group. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, it has been moved and seconded that we approve those listed items as a group. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Call for the vote. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Quintle?
Yes.
Ms. Iaquinto?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is unanimous. All right, that brings us into the administrative notes. We have administrative notes listed one through eight. Administrative Note 1 lists meeting minutes from prior to the election of two of our colleagues, so I would suggest that we take one separately as we may have some abstentions there, but I will otherwise defer to the wishes of the Board.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve Administrative Note 1.
All right, it has been moved. Do we have a second? I will second Administrative Note 1. And does anyone have anything they would like to add, edit, alter, or otherwise change in regards to the proposed meeting minutes from 4/29? All right, hearing and seeing none. I will call for the vote. Mr. Cohen?
I believe I have to abstain on that because I wasn't here, or I could actually vote if you.
Technically, you could vote if you would like, but you have.
I'll abstain.
Okay. Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Quinto?
Yes.
Ms. Iaquinto?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Four in favor, zero in opposition, and one abstention. We have approved Administrative Note 1. That brings us to Administrative Notes 2 through 8. The wish of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, unless my colleagues have questions or wish to pull out an item, I would make a motion to approve Administrative Notes 2 through 8.
All right, it has been moved by Mr. Golden. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Has been seconded. Any discussion about whether we should approve Administrative Notes 2 through 8 as a group? Hearing and seeing none. I'll call for the vote. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Quintle?
Yes.
Ms. Iaquinto?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is unanimous. We have approved Administrative Notes 2 through 8 as a group. That brings us into the agenda items proper. We are joined by one of our esteemed state representatives, Michelle Badger in the back. Michelle?
Thank you so much for having me tonight and for allowing me to take a moment to celebrate a piece of important history in our community, the Little Red Schoolhouse. This small but mighty building holds incredible legacy. This spans education, literature, justice, community service. It was where the young George Lighten, who would go on to become the first African American appointed to the Illinois appellate court and serve over a decade in the U.S. District Court, judge began his education. The Little Red Schoolhouse helped lay the foundation for him. In the 1890s, it was the center of the first libel lawsuit. Someone came on vacation and decided to just spill all the beans, and that was not what they wanted to hear. So this case not only made history, but it helped shape more of the free speech in our country. But the story doesn't stop there. This little building has been homed at countless Girl Scout and Boy Scout meetings, a haven for people seeking hope and recovery in AA, and a launchpad for local dreams through farmers markets, allowing small businesses to grow. Its walls hold transformation and resilience in our community, and a small glimpse into the history that Plymouth has to offer with the Little Red Schoolhouse. I wanted to take a moment to recognize the incredible work that keeps the history alive with the Little Red Schoolhouse Committee, including Jody Burkell, Terry and Frank McKenna, Mark Thompson, Lawrence Wayland, Linda White, and Kimberly Winship, for your dedication to ensuring this special place continues to thrive and inspire. And so I have today a citation from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It says, "The House of Representatives," sorry, probably too far, "be hereby known to all that the House of Representatives offers the sincerest congratulations to the Little Red Schoolhouse. It's in recognition of its 195th anniversary as an honored treasure, landmark of education and community, inspiring generations past and present and future. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and committed success to all endeavors given this 20th day of May at the State House, signed by the Speaker of the House and myself, Michelle Badger."
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
I have something for you. I have something for you. This is the book, The Libel Case.
Oh, no way.
It's a reproduction, so it's not the original names, which caused the hubbub. The woman who wrote it was actually a schoolteacher at the schoolhouse, and it was libel because she used everyone's real name.
Name, that's what I thought was.
These are all changed to protect the innocent.
That's unfortunate. No, I'm just kidding. Not that we know them anymore, so it wouldn't make a difference.
Well, I have an original. If you're from Cedarville, mostly if you're from Cedarville, you usually have the originals. Yeah.
Oh, wow. Well, thank you so much. I can't wait to read it. I'll get it back to you, so you have it.
No, no, it's for you.
Oh, thank you.
It is a gift.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Let's grab a photo so we have it. I don't know if you want, do you want the Select Board and other members of the committee?
That would be cool.
Can we come in front of you?
Yeah, we can go in front of them. Could bring the other committee members up. Terry? Mrs. Winship?
Okay, so this way we get right into it. We have the State of the Union, we have the State of the State, this is the State of the Schoolhouse. This is an update for the Schoolhouse. This is one of the select few actual historical buildings remaining in Plymouth, the only one in Cedarville. It was built circa 1830, as written in the State of Massachusetts macrosite. This year, the Schoolhouse turns 195. We're planning a birthday family fun day celebration in July with activities for both children and adults. As of February 2025, we've accumulated $42,500 in the Schoolhouse fund based on our usage, and this is increasing monthly. We reached out to Derek Brindisi, and he put us in touch with Connor Anderson, who is helping us with appears and historical preservation. In addition to the following groups and agencies, we have others reach out to us, i.e., OSHA has held training classes, other associations have reached out to us, many of which are weekly or biweekly meetings. We have AA, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Al-Anon, Nightingale Condo Association, Ellisville Marsh, Herring Pond Watershed, Caleb's Hollow, a Bible study group, energy clearing, numerous blood drives, four to five per year, watercolor painting, Plymouth Library held meditation classes there, Plymouth School Family Group was in there, Special Education Parent Advisory, Council of Aging, a crafts fair, farmer's market, opening of our children's library, rock painting with children, birthday party for the Schoolhouse two years ago, Plymouth Cheerleaders, Little Red Schoolhouse meetings, precinct eight caucus, Cedarville Steering Committee, Toys for Tots Drive, and of course, our annual Christmas tree lighting. We hosted a candidate night, there was a presentation from Steve Bolton and Harry Helm regarding building, and we do have the animal vet. We have received numerous positive comments after its use as to the feeling and inspiration it invokes. We are continuously getting interest from other groups as well. Respect fully submitted, Jody Burkett, Chair and the Committee, Terry McKenna, Frank McKenna, Kimberly Winship, Linda White, Mark Thompson, and Larry Wayland. And the Town did a wonderful job on our decking. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions from members of the Board? No questions, but thank you for all the work that you do. I've been to numerous events of various types, precinct caucuses, community meetings, outreach meetings, various things at the Little Red Schoolhouse, and it's a unique little part of this community as a whole, and certainly a landmark in Cedarville that I know is very well valued down there. So thank you for doing what you do to.
Thank you.
Maintain it and do all the work that you have done over the years.
And speaking for myself and the Committee, I know it's a labor of love for all of us.
Yes, and it shows. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to the next item on our agenda. That would be the July 4th Committee update. We are joined by Mr. Matt Tavares.
You can tell how long somebody knows me, whether they call me Matthew, Matt. So it's been great to get to know you, Mr. Canty, over the years, so I'll go with Matt. I'm also joined here tonight from the July 4th Committee with Anne Marie Winchester. I'd like to thank you for letting me come before you. You'll see me one more time, along with the committee members, if they're available, in June, right before July 4th, which is going to be here right before we know it. I just wanted to update the community and the board here. As you know, as we've spoken about before, we have a $130,000 goal this year. We're at about roughly 61% of that goal. We're at about $80,000. So we have a little bit of an uphill battle, a little bit of a push left to go. And just to put that into perspective, majority of that is coming from the VSB, PGDC, several businesses this year. It has been an uphill battle the last number of years. This committee, or the nonprofit that spends its funding on this parade, it's the community's parade, and it is driven by the community's donations. To put that into perspective, we have four individuals that have donated out of the entire town to the state. It's about $875. So we understand the burden that's on our businesses, but we don't want to leave it all on the businesses. So my plea to the community is if you can spare a dollar, $2, $5, it is going to go an enormous length. At this point last year, we had about $5,500 from individual donors. So that's our biggest ask tonight is for the community to understand that this parade is a community parade. It is put on by a nonprofit committee, but the success of the parade and the entrance in the parade are also from within the community. This committee doesn't own floats. It doesn't have any, you know, stored floats that we can pull out to fill spaces. So I'd encourage the community to register online by June 18th. We have about 30 entries so far. We typically see that get up to about 80. And I do also realize that it's before Memorial Day, and nobody focuses on the Fourth of July until probably next Tuesday. But I'd like you to start thinking about it a little bit earlier this year. So again, registration closes on June 18th, and you can do that online at jlythe number four plymouth.com. And you can also make donations on that website as well, right through our sponsorship page. And there's actually also sponsorship packages that I'd encourage you to explore. But just to briefly go into the day, I've been notified by the Old Colony Club that they'll be reading the Declaration of Independence at 7:00 a.m. and then at 7:30, we'll have the 5K. And if there's any questions about that, I do have Anne Marie here. The registration for that is online as well and is open. I know that there's a number of entrants and repeat runners that have come back year after year to do that race. It also begins and starts from the waterfront, from the reviewing stand, and then it finishes also at the reviewing stand. The parade will be stepping off, as we've spoken about, from Cordage Park at 9:00 a.m. I say the parade is stepping off at 9:00 a.m., but that's really where the fire trucks are probably going to start rolling down the street, and then the parade will fill in right behind all those trucks. So you'll know we're coming once you see the flashing lights from the fire trucks. In the evening at 7:00 p.m., we do have the Plymouth Philharmonic performing their concert. And then that's going to lead right into the fireworks at approximately 9:00 p.m. It's never a guaranteed time. That really kind of comes down to the lighting and how dark it is out. But it typically ends with the Plymouth Philharmonic with the 1812 overture right into the fireworks, which is an amazing experience, and I suggest that you all experience it at least one time down on Coles Hill. That is pretty much it in a very quick nutshell. I'll probably give a few more details come next month, but I just wanted to give you an update, as I do kind of in the months leading up to it. So my plea is to the community, and if you could help us out, it'll make a great day. And I'm telling you, it's a fantastic time when you're in the parade to see everyone along the route waving and smiling, especially the kids. There's nothing that makes me feel better or prouder to be a Plymouthian than on that day and being able to walk down, you know, Court Street, Main Street. That's fantastic. Unless there's any questions for me.
Thank you.
I got one from the audience, but I'm more than happy to plug the website one more time.
If you could plug the website one more. I hear there's a call for it.
Sure, I'll do it slowly. www.jlythe number four plymouth.com.
Thank you, Matt. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Matt, thanks for being here tonight. I always enjoy your updates. They're very thorough. I want folks to know that I've been sitting in on the July 4th Plymouth meetings, and I am astounded by how much work goes into this event. And I've only been in three meetings so far. These folks spend hours and hours of their free time putting on what I think is one of the premier community events here in Plymouth. So if we can get some support for them, they do it all for free. So if we can get some support for them, take some stress off of them, because this is the hardest part, is getting the dollars. They've got the event management down to a science. It's getting the money in the coffers so that they can afford to do it. That is most important right now. So please, please come out and support.
Thank you, Mr. Golden.
Thank you for all your work.
Ten years ago, I had hair, and then I started doing it.
But no, yeah, thank you very much. That is the part of it, and I appreciate you sitting
in on those meetings. And it helps when there's kind of that insider that sees it that can also speak to the community. So thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Ms. Iaquinto?
Yeah, I just had a question. I'm wondering.
Your mic.
Sorry about that. I'll get the hang of that. I'm wondering what we or the town might be able to do to help encourage fundraising for this effort. I know you gave your website, and we can send contributions to the website.
I guess that would be a conversation with the committee and the town manager, or maybe the PR person. It probably gets a little, I don't want to speak out of turn here, but because we are a nonprofit, there are other nonprofits within the town, so, you know, you don't want to look like you're favoring one over the other. But the allowance of us to be able to come before you each month has been a huge help. The VSB, the Town Manager's Office all contribute, and the PGDC all contribute each year, and that is an amazing piece. You know, someday, you know, I don't want to talk budget too early, but if we could put a little money in there, that would be fantastic as well. But yeah, I'd be more than happy to have a conversation with the Assistant Town Manager, Town Manager, about, you know, what we could do. We do have a very active Facebook page. You're going to start, you know, the posts are coming out now with, and then, you know, promoting our various sponsors, especially our corporate sponsors, and our events throughout the day. And then we also have an Instagram that I think we're going to revive a little bit soon, hopefully.
They're cross.
Yeah, they cross post, so.
Mr. Cohen?
Again, thank you, Matt, for your service.
He's got the hair still.
Yeah, I was going to say, we can't forget Ken Tavares and his work over the years on this as a selectman and as a volunteer. But anything that we can do, please let us know. Let me know what I can do. But I, you know, I do recognize you're a nonprofit, and we don't want to be saying, claiming favorites, but this is a unique nonprofit. We're celebrating Independence Day. And I think that here in this town, being one of the first towns in North America, you know, leading up to this moment on July 4th, 1776, I think there's a special relationship, and we should do whatever we can as a community to support the parade in every capacity that we can find, which is appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, Matt, thank you very much. I appreciate all the work that you guys have done and continue to do. I would ask Anne Marie about some more details about the race in the morning. That's the event component that I know the least about myself, since I'm usually lining up with the parade.
Just, we have some new faces in the room tonight, too. Just, I'm more of the background person here, so most people don't know who I am. So I will introduce myself. My name is Anne Marie Winchester. I own a company called South Shore Race Management. Our office is located here in Plymouth. We produce approximately 30 races a year. All of the races that we do, money goes to charity. It's strictly why we exist, is to give money to charities. We raise anywhere between $250,000 and $300,000 every year. That goes directly back into the communities. It goes back to the businesses. It goes to nonprofits, primarily to smaller organizations that really have difficulty securing funds. The Fourth of July Parade is one of them. It did take us a couple of years back about, oh, probably 14 years ago when we first approached Ken about doing a race on the Fourth of July. The contingency for the race on the Fourth of July was that I joined the committee. So.
That's how they get you.
That was how I got my race approval, was to actually join the Fourth of July Committee. So, and now I handle the social media and sponsor tracking and emails and the website. And so I do play an additional role in the actual overall event. And so that's what I do. We do bring in to the communities we work in. We bring in about 10,000-plus runners a year. So it's a great boost for businesses. It's a great boost for our communities. You know, in Plymouth, we do Fourth of July. We support Social Community Action Council, Food Pantry, things like that. So we like to keep the money as local as we possibly can. And so with the Fourth of July Road Race, last year, while Stevens Field went under construction, we decided to move the race down to the waterfront. It is actually south of Plymouth Rock where the start and the finish line is, where we are right by Brewster Gardens. The race goes out Water Street, goes north on Water Street, takes a left on Nelson, right on Court Street, right on Robbins Road, and it picks up the rail trail, goes through Nelson Park, back left on Water Street, south, and finishes right back in the same place that it started. We had 976 people registered last year. So that is the largest number we've had to date. I think the first year that we had the race, we had about 400 runners. We've had a couple of bad weather years, so that definitely impacts numbers. We do have a Friday, Fourth of July this year. Our numbers right now are up about 4% from where they were at this time last year. So I'm hoping that we actually crest that 1,000 runner mark this year. The more runners we have, the more money goes back to the parade. So it's really important to boost that. Plus, we also have several runners. We asked all of the participants if they would like to make an additional donation to the parade. So we do have several runners that take advantage of that, and that money, the additional donations, also all goes back to the parade as well. So the more runners we have, the more money we can use to support the rest of the events of the day.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any additional questions from members of the board? Seeing none, thank you both very much.
Thank you.
And I look forward to your next update.
7:30, all of you, 5K, July 4.
All right, thank you very much. That brings us to the next item on our agenda, that being M3 Ventures Incorporated, doing business as Triple M, host community agreement approval. We are joined by Town Council? Yes?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Are you presenting, or are we waiting for?
I am. I can certainly present. I had thought that Mr. Hurley had wanted to zoom in. He was sent the Zoom information login earlier. I just don't know if he's waiting.
Okay. So we will recognize Mr. Hurley and bring him in on the Zoom webinar platform. Hello, we can hear you.
So Town Council will present. I'm here to answer any questions the board may have after her presentation.
Oh.
Put the video on.
Okay, I will. All right, so we will have a presentation by Town Council. And Mr. Hurley, if we ask you any questions, if you could turn your video on, that has been the request from the local scene. So without further ado, Ms. McKay.
Thank you. This is similar to the ones we have done before, a fix for an HCA that was drafted, executed, presented to the board, went up to the CCC and was found to be deficient in several areas. They sent the notification back to the town, and we have worked with Triple M or 3M to get it to a point where it should be acceptable to go back up to the CCC, similar to the other ones. We have done another amendment for your signature and consideration. What would happen if it is approved tonight, if the vote is in the affirmative, the establishment takes the old underlying agreement with the portions that were not okay with the CCC. They add the amendment, they submit it, and then the CCC will again let us know if it's approved or if it's not approved. So far, the ones that we have done, I think even the most two recent ones, were turned around with pretty quick approval. So I expect we'll know, hopefully, somewhat quickly, the response on this one as well.
All right, great. Thank you. Any questions for either Attorney McKay or Mr. Hurley? Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kate, I would just renew Mr. Canty's question from our last meeting. How many more of these should we be expecting?
If you won't hold me to it exactly, because I think the CCC is reviewing them on a rolling basis, so they could, I don't know how many more they have to review that have been previously submitted, but I can't imagine there's many more that are under review at this point. I think we've taken care of three or four. I don't think there are that many more left. There might be some new ones coming in, assuming that there aren't more in the queue I don't know about.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
All right. Any other questions? Hearing and seeing none. Do I have a motion in regards to the approval of the amended Anyone care to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, unless there are further questions, I'll make a motion to approve the HCA as presented.
All right, it has been moved. Do I have a second?
I will second that.
It has been moved by Mr. Golden, seconded by Ms. Iaquinto, that we approve the amended HCA. Any discussion from members of the board?
Yeah.
Mr. Quinto?
This keeps coming back to the board, and they took out a lot of the caveats, as I understand it, that were actually beneficial to the community. So for that reason, I'm voting no.
Thank you, Mr. Quinto. Any other discussion from members of the board? Hearing and seeing none. Call for the vote. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Quinto?
No.
Ms. Iaquinto?
Yes.
And myself, yes. We are four in favor, one in opposition. With no abstentions, the motion does carry. We have approved the amended HCA.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item is duplicative of the activity we already went through with Pilgrim 1600. Unless anyone has anything else they'd like to add to what we did at the workshop, seeing none, we can move forward. That will bring us into public comment. So we have a public comment. Mr. Charlie Bletzer is coming towards the podium. Mr. Bletzer, welcome.
Sorry, Mr. Serkey. I'll be quick. Congratulations, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Vice Chairman, and you know positions. I might need 10 seconds over my three minutes, but I'll try and make this quick. Honorable members of the Select Board and residents of Plymouth, thank you for the opportunity tonight to let me speak. I appreciate that. I'd like to begin by thanking our town clerk, Kelly McKelworth, and her staff for the outstanding work in providing a safe, secure, and well-organized voting process for our residents. The election saw a higher-than-usual turnout, and the success of early voting and mail-in ballots is a testament to their dedication. I have the utmost respect for our democratic process, and I want to sincerely thank every voter who participated. and I want to sincerely thank every voter who participated. Tonight belongs to Bill and Deb, and I congratulate them on their hard-earned victories. And I'm here with my head held high to to congratulate them. With that being said, I want to take a moment to share a personal note of thanks to the people of Plymouth. It has been a true honor to serve on this board for the past four years. Every decision I've made has been grounded in one goal, doing what's best for the people of Plymouth. I'm proud of what we've accomplished together, and while I wish I could help see through the work we've started, I leave knowing that progress will continue. One of the most meaningful parts of this role has been working alongside our incredible local nonprofits, small businesses, and tourism leaders. Whether it was helping business owners navigate challenges, supporting community events, or advocating for initiatives that bring people to our historic town, I've always believed that a strong Plymouth depends on a local, strong local economy and a vibrant civic spirit. I want to thank our town manager, Derek Brindisi, and our assistant town manager, for their leadership and vision. With their guidance and the innovation of our dedicated department heads, I believe Plymouth's brightest days are ahead. To all of our town employees, thank you for your hard work, your commitment, and for being the backbone of this community. To my campaign committee, thank you for standing by me and running a clean, positive campaign. And I'm humbled by the support I've received from my family, friends, and neighbors, both near and far. Your belief in me has meant the world to me. To Bill and Deb, congratulations on your successful campaigns. You earned your seats through hard work, passion, and the support of many who believe in your vision. I wish you both the very best as you begin this important chapter of service. As I step away, I offer this final thought. Let's put Plymouth first. It's time to move past division and partisanship. We owe it to our town and to each other to work together with respect and unity. I love this town, and I'm proud to call Plymouth my home, and I'll always be grateful for the privilege of serving it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bletzer. Any other public comment? Mr. Cirque?
Rich Cirque, Precinct 2, Town Meeting member. At this board's meeting on May 7, Charles Heller claimed that Mr. Quintal had made a quote-unquote "false and troubling statement" one week earlier, when he confused Southeastern Pine Barons Alliance, Inc., Southeastern, with Community Land and Water Association, Inc., Community, even though Ms. Heller is associated with both. Meg Sheehan demanded an apology from Mr. Quintal, even though she is counsel to Southeastern and clerk of Community. Last week, I came into possession of a Rockland Trust Company check signed by Ms. Heller in 2022 that bears the pre-printed names of both Southeastern and Community on its face and lists their joint address as 158 Centerhill Road. How can people feign outrage in this way with a straight face? This check proves that both Ms. Heller and Ms. Sheehan used an innocuous error by Mr. Quintal to deliberately malign him. In my opinion, the only apology needed in this case should come from Ms. Heller and Ms. Sheehan. When I was in private practice, I had occasion to represent private corporations like A.D. Makepeace Company and nonprofit corporations like the Boy Scouts of America when they sought and obtained permits from the zoning board to use their property in particular ways. In many such cases, abutters, seemingly representative for free by Ms. Sheehan because of Ms. Sheehan's family fortune, appealed those permits to court, causing those corporations to have to delay their projects for years or abandon them entirely, and in the process, costing them thousands of dollars in legal fees to defend their permits in court. Now, it's one thing for a corporation, be it private or public, to be forced to spend thousands of dollars in legal fees only to have to abandon its project thereafter. But it's another thing for towns to have to spend that kind of money. Because in that case, the people who have to foot the bill are not shareholders or donors, but instead are taxpayers. A Plymouth resident can choose whether or not to be a shareholder of a private corporation or whether or not to be a donor to a nonprofit corporation. But all Plymouth residents are, in essence, taxpayers, either directly as owners or indirectly through their rental payments.
Mr. Cirque, you've exceeded your three minutes. I can give you an additional minute to conclude your remarks, or I can give you further time with an affirmative vote.
I won't even need a minute.
Okay, go ahead.
A watchdog with limitless resources to do what she believes is God's work, who recruits abutters as plaintiffs who appear to have no real skin in the game, and who in the process plunders the public till, is far more than a mere watchdog. Such people are extremists who have transformed public officials into political hostages in furtherance of their personal political agenda. Financial consequences should be imposed on them in return for the financial damage they have continued to wreak upon all Plymouth citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Cirque. Anyone else wishing to give public comment from the room? Hearing and seeing none. Okay, we have someone on Zoom. We are bringing the individual on. I think it's Danny Bell, if I can read it correctly.
That's right, Mr. Canty. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, and congratulations to the new elected officials, Dan Bell, Nine Stetson Court, down in Cedarville, Precinct 12. And unfortunately, I just have some things to address about 71 Hedges Pond Road. I don't know all the ins and outs of this, to tell you the truth. I just know it's a mess. A lot of accusations going back and forth. But what I wanted to do tonight is just talk about my observations. And my most recent observation is that there is a big, huge "for sale, for lease" sign in front of the property, and it says "fully permitted industrial development opportunity." And in looking at it, I'm looking at it, and I see down in that big hole is the whole sand mining operation. This definitely does not look like incidental sand removal to carve out a space for the platform that would be needed for two ice skating rinks and a lumberyard. It's obvious to me right now that there was never any intention for this thing to be two ice skating rinks and a lumberyard. So I just wanted to bring attention to that to the public. I imagine you guys know that this sign has been posted. I thought it would be five years down the road that we would find out that, oh, he never really did plan on building an ice skating rink and lumberyard. It's obvious. He's got this, he's flipping it. He's he's doing his thing. He's gonna flip it. And then, second to that, there is enormous dust coming from it. I ride a cycle. I ride that area all the time. And now I have to ride shielded over my face because of the amount of dust that gets in my eyes, both going up Hedges Pond Road and then up 3A on the other side. And then anyways, that that concludes my comments, with the exception of one comment about the broadcast tonight. And I know how difficult it is for the video control operator, but there is a lot of times tonight where the microphone, the camera's on the microphone and it's just empty, or it's not the person that's talking. My suggestion is just go to a wide shot so you can see the whole room if you gotta get distracted to fix something else that's going on in the video booth. That's my comments. Thanks for listening.
Thank you for your comments and your notes. All right. Any other public comment from anyone on Zoom? Anyone in the room? All right. That concludes public comment. That brings us to the town manager's report. Mr. Brindisi?
All right. Good evening, Board. So I want to start with providing an update to a residential complex that was first approved by the planning board. This is the Claymont Project I'm referring to. That was a 350-unit residential project up by Colony Place. That project, for many reasons, did not move forward, but it came back, as you all know, as a 40B project. That's a 300-unit 40B project. Recently, that project has moved through the state various agencies. This developer has since filed with the ZBA, and we are expecting the ZBA to hold a hearing within the next 30 days. We're expecting approximately June 9 for this hearing to take place. This is through the comprehensive permit process of 40B. Ultimately, this project will be about 300 units of residential space there at Colony Place. So again, we're expecting that to be approved by the ZBA on June 19, or thereabouts. So moving on, we have an update on the Plymouth master planning process. The next Strategies Workshop will take place on May 22, so this coming Thursday, from 6 to 7:30 p.m. at the Plymouth South Middle School Cafeteria. Just a quick update on the election data from this past Saturday. I know our town clerk will be in front of the Select Board to provide a more comprehensive overview of this information. But just so folks are aware, we had about 8,055 votes, which represents approximately 15% turnout. 3,400 of those votes were early votes, and the remaining were the day-of-election votes. So it appears that things went well in the first time we went out with consolidation. And again, the town clerk will provide a more comprehensive update next Tuesday at the Select Board meeting. I just want to alert folks that Memorial Day is coming, this coming Monday. So we'll have our annual parade. It'll step off at approximately 9:30 a.m. The first stop will be at Memorial Hall, where a presentation will be made. We'll move on to Town Hall with another presentation, and then over to the Memorial Bridge. And then ultimately, we will end at the Training Green. So if there is inclement weather, everything will be moved into Town Hall for the ceremonies to take, sorry, into Memorial Hall for the ceremonies to take place there. So hoping to get good weather and hoping to see everybody at the Memorial Day Parade. An announcement on the Halfway Pond and Long Pond Road intersection. So as you all know, there's been some tree clearing that's taken place so far. The restart of this project, we're expecting to take place on June 23. So we're going to wait for school to end, which we believe it ends on June 18. And so we're going to start that process quickly thereafter. So we're expecting to restart that intersection project on June 23. May 30 is DPW Day. From 10 a.m. to 2 p.m., we're on Claymont Drive at the DPW facility. As we usually do, we'll be hosting a family fun event. You know, I hope parents can take their children there, see the trucks. There'll be food available for free as well. So again, assuming we can get great weather, on May 30, we'll be holding DPW Day. Next week, for the Select Board, we will be presenting our annual road improvement plan. But for now, I would say those folks that are interested in learning whether or not their roads are on the list this year, you can go to the town's website under the road improvement page, and you can look for your street. But again, DPW Director and Assistant DPW Director will begin next week to go through the road improvement program for this summer construction season. I want to bring to the board's attention that it is my intention to appoint a Quality of Life Task Force. This task force will be made up of fire, police, code enforcement, public health, social services, the Department of Energy and the Environment, and our DPW staff. The intention of this group is to really look at quality of life issues. We'll start by looking at blighted properties, neighborhoods that have blight. We'll focus on those areas where we have folks that are unhoused, and try to identify strategies that we can find them, wraparound services, and permanent housing. So this will be led by Commissioner Michelle Braddy. And so we'll be appointing this task force within the next few weeks so that we can start to find ways to respond to these very complicated quality of life issues here in this community. Full sale update. So we're expecting the demolition of the full sale over on Taylor Ave to take place the week of June 2. We're just waiting for the final order of conditions for the Conservation Commission. The bridge will be replaced over at Jenny Pond, not this Friday, but the following Friday. We're just waiting for the bridge to get here, and then that bridge will be replaced again at Jenny Pond. I want to bring to the board's attention, there's been, for multiple years now, a class action lawsuit against various manufacturers who have used PFAS additives in their products. That suit is almost complete. The town will receive approximately half a million dollars over six years from this settlement. We plan to use those dollars for additional, you know, waterways improvements when necessary. That money will be put into a special fund. Ultimately, when a disenter's made how to use those dollars, we would then go seek approval from Town Meeting. But again, so we expect to get the first tranche of money within the next few months, again, from the PFAS class action lawsuit. Just as a reminder, June 5, we'll be cutting the ribbon on the new dog park. Already receiving lots of positive feedback on this dog park. So again, June 5, on Thursday, we'll be cutting the ribbon on that. And then last, I just want to bring to the board's attention the 130 acres that Town Meeting approved for conservation back in 2018. The affidavits have been filed and recorded at the Registry of Deeds that those 130 acres at Hedges Pond Road are now under the care and custody of the Conservation Commission. And so I'd also just remind folks that the cost, the legal cost to record those deeds, has been paid for by the Economic Development Foundation. Pending any questions, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Brindisi. Mr. Golden, a question for Mr. Brindisi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for the update, Derek. The, I see the town clerk is still in the room. I don't know if she knows this information, but if she if she doesn't, I would like to hear in our, in her more fulsome update as to whether or not this was the largest number of voters in a municipal election. I went back through, I think, the last five municipal elections, and it was certainly larger than all of those. There were many concerns about consolidation and whether or not it was an effort on this board's part to suppress the vote. I hope that those fears are assuaged, and folks realize that the only people who can decide whether or not they're going to vote are the voters themselves.
Thank you. Any, Mr. Quinto, a question?
Derek, I went back to, I think it's Avalon now, the 350 units. Do you know what that was originally? Wasn't it 250?
So it's 300 units today. It was originally 350 units, split over two different buildings. So now it's going to be one superstructure of 300 units. So now it's gonna be one superstructure of 300 units.
And it's a 40B, right?
That is correct. It's a 40B, yes.
And that's because the developers, I believe it was Clermont, were given a hard time.
Clermont was the original developer who received a special permit from the Planning Board. Oh, it's the ZBA, I forget. And because of multiple appeals that were filed against this development that had approval, the Clermont developer at the time withdrew its intention to develop that 350-unit property. They went back, and they came back to the town with a 40B proposal of one superstructure of 300 units.
And is the well that was negotiated still, the pump booster station still in play?
The booster station that was negotiated as part of the 40B friendly, the friendly 40B process is still going to take place, yes.
Okay. Was this, these appeals led by Meg Sheehan?
Yes, so Meg Sheehan was the attorney that filed the lawsuits against Clermont on behalf of a couple of abutters in the area, yes.
Okay, thank you. And I just have one more thing.
Yes.
I also came down election night, and this was always the happening, I thought it was always the happening place here. There was all, you know, I call them camps. And, you know, they call the numbers back. But now, with new technology, it's different. But I have to say, I snuck in the door, and I asked Callie, and she let me stay, and I watched the whole thing, and it was amazing, like clockwork. The only thing I'd recommend, and she probably knows what I'm gonna say, is that we tape off some spaces by the atrium. So the police officers and the pole workers, I don't know, wardens can bring in the computer pieces. And I saw them cutting the straps. And it's a little tiny, probably that big, there's two for each precinct, if I remember correctly. And she takes those out, and she put them. You know, and I took pictures of it all. And I have to say, great job, great turnout. And I'd never seen anything so fast. So you definitely moved it all in the right direction, and you deserve credit for it. So I just want to say that to you.
Mr. Cohen?
Derek, the comments about the task force that you're putting together, you were talking about blight and things of that nature. You might want to include maybe some outreach to the Plymouth Free Development Authority. They were designed to do that. So you might tap them for their unique capabilities when it comes to dealing with blighted sites.
Sure. It's been an idea.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Bendizzi? All right. That brings us, thank you, Mr. Bendizzi. That brings us into Select Board discussion. First, new business. Any members have any new business at this time? If no one else does, I have a couple. First, I'd like to thank the board for electing me as the chair. I appreciate that very much and look forward to working with all of you. And congratulations to Mr. Golden as Vice Chair. I look forward to working with you as well. I'd also like to look back on Mr. Charlie Bletzer and John Mahoney's service. They put in a lot of years on this board in serving this community, not just on this board, but in other roles as well. And their contributions will be remembered. And a lot of the work that they started will be continued by this board. And when we finish those projects, we will circle back and remind folks of what Mr. Bletzer and Mr. Mahoney contributed to those efforts as well. And I also appreciate Mr. Bletzer's remarks earlier. We don't often respond to public comment, but I know that Mr. Bletzer left it all in the field in this campaign, and coming here and congratulating Bill and Deb shows the strength of his character. I'd also like to speak as to the civil service question that was on the ballot. Obviously, that problem still exists that we were trying to address. But we have to do a better job advocating for what, for changing the status quo to the residents. And we need to acknowledge that we didn't do a good job explaining that need to folks in advance of this election. Because if we had, we are aware, the three of us that were on the board previously, and I know Ms. Iaquinto in the campaign trail was in favor, Mr. Cohen was not, but I think we will, we will be able to demonstrate to Mr. Cohen as well, as well as many of the members of the public, the need for changing civil service. But it really starts with identifying the problem and educating the public about that issue and making them feel comfortable with the status quo change. We've been in civil service since 1917, and I understand that in order to change something, you need to get people on board with it. I don't, unfortunately, we didn't do a good job at that. And it's really the police department that's gonna suffer because they are able to lose an employee within two weeks, but it takes 18 months to replace them. So there's gonna be more of a burden on those officers than there would have been otherwise. But we need to begin the process of starting to educate the public on that and trying to answer their questions so that we can solve this issue, not just for the benefit of the police, but to the benefit of the community that they and we serve. So that is something that I would like us to continue to take up in a new form, hence why I'm bringing it under new business. That brings us, if there's no other new business, that would bring us to letters. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We received a nice letter from Nicole Lopez. Loops, I'm not sure how you pronounce it. But she detailed her children's experience with the Shishigahama trip and asked for support from the board financially. I think Mr. Quintle brought this up in a prior meeting. And I'd like to see us take up some discussion about this item on a future agenda, see if there's anything we can do to further support, specifically the students who are participating in this exchange program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gold. Any other letters, Mr. Quinton?
I apologize because I had this letter on May 4th, and it just got in the back of the file. But it's from a resident and seniors. And they're, talks about recycling permits from the town for the use of the Manomet Transfer Station. And the cost going up, they went up $40, then $50, 25% increase, now $60, 20% increase. And I asked Mr. Bendizzi if he could check with this department if it was still within it, that if anything, we could freeze it at what it's been, rather than increasing again. There's not a lot of things we can do. I know we, board here, can discuss it, but I think anything we can do to help the seniors in our town, that we should do it. So I don't know if we have time or if you want to, how you want to handle it, but I definitely want to have a discussion on it.
Okay. We can certainly look into that and having that.
You know, I'll give you a copy of the letter, but.
Thank you.
There you go.
Appreciate it. All right. Any other letters? Any other board members? All right. That brings us to old business. Any old business? Mr. Quinton?
We, the President Board, I'd like to say, I usually don't speak on the public comment. So regardless, I won't. But I do want to thank Charlie. You're my buddy and a good friend, and you're a good citizen in this town. And you have nothing to be ashamed of. Because I know a lot of things about you that other people don't know. And when I've ever asked you to help me do anything for anyone, you've always been there. You know, this is a funny racket, if you will. I'm not a politician, and I never want to be. I do it because I love the town, every inch of it, no matter where you live. People bark a little bit at me because sometimes I can be a little rough on the edges. Well, you know what? I treat people how they treat me. And everybody has a bad day. And the apology thing, it wasn't a big deal. I would have done it in a heartbeat. I apologize whenever I have to. But I'm not gonna have people standing at the microphone and dictating to me that I should apologize. I'm 66 years old, and I think I have very good values. And I want to thank you, Mr. Cirque. I didn't know that, you know, it was gonna all happen, but I, you know, appreciate it. I also want to thank Charlie. And I'm trying to, I have an appointment with the governor, I had one, on June 11th. I've asked the chairman if I can still go on that trip. I've asked the vice chairman. And I hope I can because I want to carry out your prior goals. Charlie DC Appak was yours. And to Mr. Mahoney, who is here, I think he said for 15 years, the thousand acres was John's destiny. And I wrote a draft, and I sent it to the state delegation. And I asked you earlier, and you were in a meeting. So as soon as you know your answer, please let me know. Because it means a lot to me, and I know it means a lot to the previous board members.
Thank you, Mr. Quintal. Any other old business from any other members of the board? All right. Hearing and seeing none. Do I have a motion to adjourn, having concluded our business?
So moved.
And do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. It has been moved by Mr. Golden, seconded by Mrs. Iaquinto, that we adjourn for the evening, having concluded our business. Any objection? Seeing none, Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Quintal?
Yes.
Is it Iaquinto?
Yes.
And myself, yes. We are adjourned for the evening. Thank you very much.